It's called order. This is going to be City of Port Ritchie, City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 22nd. At this time, I'd like to invite. Normally, our invocation is done by Mr. Lord. Come on up, please.
Can I make you?
Yes, would you be willing to do that for us, please?
Be glad.
Thank you.
That'd be an honor.
Let's pray. Lord, we just want to thank you for being able to serve the people here, Lord. You just shared with us, the greatest is the greatest servant, Lord. We just pray you'd restore the good name to Port Ritchie, Lord. And as your word says, unless you keep the city, they keep it in vain. So, Lord, we just thank you for watching over our city. And, Lord, just thank you for our law and fire department and pray you would protect them. And, Lord, I hear there's sick ones in the staff. Lord, we just pray that you'd comfort them and raise them up to be back to work. And so, Lord, we just thank you now for setting the budget and all for the thing and for wisdom tonight, Lord. We just ask you to help us be one and make the right decisions for our city. And we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Lord.
You're welcome, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mayor, just before I do roll, I have Zoom activated tonight for Councilman Sorrell, but she did notify me that per her reception, she may not be able to Zoom in tonight. So, I'm going to leave that open in case for any reason she happens to get into the meeting. But as per the roll, I'm going to declare her absent and then we'll move forward. Mayor Scott Tremblay.
Here.
Vice Mayor William Dimmer.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell. Let the record show that Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell is absent from tonight's meeting. Councilman Tom McClary.
Here.
Councilman Tom Kinsella.
Here.
City Attorney James Mathew.
Here.
City Manager Leonard Sossman.
Here.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve council minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time, we wanted to move on to comments from the general public. I'm going to start with David Mueller. I see you're signed up.
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. Appreciate you guys being here, mayor, councilman, and administration. I did some quick analysis of the millage rate and where we're proposing to move that Just by nature of the values of our individual properties rising from a good market, there's a 3% increase that the city is going to benefit. Our total increase is about 20%, 17 of which is the amount that 1% increase that we've burdened our residents with. And I would like to ask that you give consideration to rolling that back to the original rate because there are going to be some hardships there. I mean, there already is a 3% uptick in our property values and don't know whether that was factored in. That cost of living adjustment should be factored in and maybe bring that down. In effect, that's 14% of our increase in the base and want to know if that's factored in. The other question I have is, I know there's individuals that were unable to attend and would like to have their statements read into the minutes. One of the other things, I'll just put it right out there, the good, the bad, and the ugly. The good are the restrooms are open and people appreciate that. I've been having conversation with quite a few folks and things are looking good. I've also noticed that the utility crews have been doing maintenance and that's all good. The bad, now that we've got the restrooms open, maybe we can look at getting the tables opened at the parks as well. And the ugly, boat ramp parking at Nick's Park. There've been some accidents there. I've tried to, I actually had the opportunity to use it this last week and notice that there, the angle that you park at makes it very difficult for you to, once you park in one of those spots, to back out and try to get corrected. Consequently, that's where the accidents are coming. I know we're looking at doing something potentially for Nick's Park and if we could take a look at maybe restriping or realigning those spaces, and maybe it's going to be fewer spaces and more of a steeper angle to allow the truck and a trailer combo to effectively negotiate backing out of the space once it's been parked. Also, is there any potential to have cameras there as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Ms. McClary, welcome. Long time no see.
Sherri McClary, 8731 Betty Street. So, first of all, thanks to everyone here and for all the work that you do. Much appreciated. I just want to talk about an incident that occurred regarding mangrove destruction on September 17th at about 3:00 PM Eastern Time. I gave you all a brief packet with the summary, but I'll be sending you all the statutes and rules and information that I have to support my claims and the situation today. In short, on September 17th, a resident at 5400 Tropical Wood Court ripped out about 100 mangroves with a backhoe. And the impact of this removal is severe, and it was done illegally. There were no official permits allowed for this. One of the last natural canals in Port Ritchie, the silt that's now running into the already shallow canal is going to impact the residents on Old Post Road, on Green Street, as well as Betty Street. So, in a few years, that will be silted out if those mangroves are not reestablished. Also, I want to mention that there's an impact to manatees, dolphins, and the otters that live there. The neighbor woke up to screaming animals in the morning when the backhoe started ripping these out. Unauthorized activity, so Swift Mudd is already investigating. I already have a call into the Army Corps of Engineers. What happened with Mr. Kevin Beatty was he did do a self-certification through the Florida DEP, but that only allowed him to put in a doc. There is no approval of destruction of mangroves. Similarly, the Army Corps of Engineers did not approve mangrove destruction, and it was not aligned to their stated general conditions of SAJ-20, which again states no destruction of mangroves. Additional discovery I'll be sending you is all the statutes that he claims that he is exempt for. I'll also send you pictures before, during, and after the destruction so you can see and witness testimonials and emails and a video. The ask of the council today is, how can we incorporate the requirements of state agencies into our local oversight so this doesn't happen again? And secondly, how are we going to prevent this from happening in the future? I know Dallas came there in the midst of this, but it really should have never occurred in the first place. So, I just, you know, our residents and our waterfront are two of our biggest assets in Port Ritchie, and so we want to maintain that. So, I just beseech you to think about this and maybe find a way to mitigate future incidences.
Can I ask you just a quick question?
Sure.
Where, it was along Betty Street?
It was actually across the street on the other side, and it's the gated community. It was 5400 Tropical Wood Court. And they ripped out, I don't know, what was it, about 25 feet in width and then probably 10 to 15 feet in depth. He claimed on his paperwork there were one or two mangroves, and it was all Spanish pepper.
And let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
If I may.
Sure.
There, because it's gated, so I've never been back there.
Yeah.
It's residential, correct? There's houses there?
Yes.
Is there a seawall where that came out? Or is it just?
No, it's the last, one of the last natural canals in Port Ritchie.
Okay, so there's no seawall?
No.
Any kind of rock, anything that they put there?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, that's all. The next person that I had signed up was Pastor Lord.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Again, we appreciate your service to the city and just want to make you aware of a couple of things. Our annual fish fry, of course, will be the last Wednesday of next month, I think the 28th. And y'all all are invited. It'd be good to have you here and be there with us and join us. This Saturday, as I've given you a flyer on, is the Care Fest. What this is, is where the faith-based join together with the government code enforcement and so forth and come out to serve where needs are. Most of ours are with the senior nutrition with Pasco County Meals on Wheels, mostly painting and a lot of yard and lawn work by people that are disabled and can't do it. So, if you want to be a part of that or anything we can help y'all with, that's this Saturday at 8:00, we're going to be having breakfast, and then about 9:00, we'll be taking off with the projects. Be coming back, 12:30, we'll finish our projects and head back. And there, we'll have a lunch for everybody, talk about it. And the big meeting in Washington, hopefully we can, I don't know if we'll be able to join that. We want to. The one that does our internet stuff is out of town, so we'll see what happens. And so, just thank you all again. And as I talked to about the committee, we'll be ready to serve for Christmas or whatever else we could do. But right now, the 26th, this Saturday, our Care Fest and then the Fish Fry the last Wednesday of October, and be honored if y'all could be there. Thank you for serving again, and Lord bless you. And if there's any way we can pray, let me know. I did get some from Sal and from the chief, so just keep me up so we can serve and pray for y'all, encourage you as best we can, okay? Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor.
That's all that was signed up. I wanted to open it for anyone who's here that wasn't able to sign up. Seeing no hands, we're going to move on to comments from our city manager, and I'd like to invite Mr. Sossman to speak.
Ready? Can I hear it? No? Nope.
That's better. How's that? Come, Mr. What? A little bit, okay. Shaking. But several things tonight for me, I'd like to ask Sean to come up and speak to you. I think if you remember two weeks ago, when you authorized the opening of the bathrooms in our parks, you asked us if he would monitor it and give you a report tonight. So, either from his seat, if he's more comfortable there. Yeah, he is. So, if he'll give you that report tonight, then I'll move on for the next couple items I have, if that's okay.
Okay. All right. Good evening. Once we opened it up, we spent the entire day, the day before, cleaning and getting everything ready. We, the first week we were doing it, we were doing almost an hour and a half per bathroom, disinfecting it. This was, went through our entire stock of bleach that we had in our machine. Over the weekend, we came across a little bit smarter. We're actually using a yard sprayer. We're actually using a 10% bleach mix from our plant, which we can get cheaper. We've got it knocked down to right about 45 minutes in each park. Doing it right now, what we're doing is we're finding out that, Mr. Mueller could probably tell you for a fact, if you walk in and you smell bleach, it's 10%, it's a 10% solution that we're spraying walls, floors, ceiling, everything that's in it, and then we're wiping it down. We have seen a large increase on the paper towels and the toilet paper, hence the folks that, most of them aren't residents, but they are transient residents, they are deciding to take them. So, right now, we have an uptick of a lot of our paper towels and our toilet paper. I know for a fact, Monday morning, I went in and Brasher Park was completely cleaned out of both, on both bathrooms. We do, we are doing some repairs. Oldsners, somebody broke a toilet, we're fixing it. Brasher Parks, not Brasher, Nick's Park, there's a toilet that's leaking. We're going to have to put the men's room out of service for a couple of days, or actually for a couple hours, and we'll replace the toilet. On top of the 45 minutes to an hour it takes us to clean, we're also maintaining the parks. So, we also have the other three parks to do it. And presently, every other day, I'm using two employees versus the one that I normally use. Thank you.
Any questions?
I had one. Can we use that same spray solution on the outside tables and things? I know they're, like Mr. Mueller just mentioned, the tables are still closed. Could they be sprayed down and wiped off when they're doing?
That's up to Mr. Sossman. Right now, like I said, this is a bleach solution. I know in Waterfront Park, it'll eventually take the epoxy off the tables. I do notice that there's one in Waterfront Park that I've caught the mailman sitting at, having lunch. He claims he's never ripped down the stuff, so every time he goes to lunch, we go back and rewrap the table over by the boardwalk. The ones that, most of the ones that are wood will destroy with this bleach solution.
So, is there another solution that we can use that would be less toxic to the corrosive?
There may be served. I haven't, we haven't looked into it yet.
Okay.
That's something we can look into.
I'd like to see that open. The bathrooms can be open, I think the.
Yeah, most of our picnic tables are wood.
Yep.
So, they're not sealed wood. I mean, we could go through and, after the beginning of the year, and, you know, sand them and seal them, and then we could spray them. But the ones that are epoxy, that's going to be the problem because the bleach will take the epoxy off.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just have something to address that.
And I'll call on you when we're done.
Okay, yes, to do with what we can treat.
Okay. I know that, Mr. McClary?
Yeah, you'd mentioned some people are stealing the paper towels and toilet paper, et cetera. Did that happen prior to this whole COVID thing, or is that a new added burden that we're encountering? I mean, obviously, we had the bathrooms open beforehand, so were they stealing it? And this is just a continuation of what happened before, or is this new?
I would like to say it's a continuation. Right now, it's amplified. We do have, like I said, Waterfront Park, which I know the council kind of, you know, didn't realize that, you know, we do have a lot of homeless there. They do take baths there. Nick's Park, the same. This was just exacerbated because they just got opened. So, you know, they're, I didn't say steal. But yes, sir, there are rolls of toilet paper is going out. We do have some, we still have continuing vandalism. Again, you know, we do have toilets that, you know, they take a whole roll of, and we're using, we're talking nine-inch rolls of toilet paper and shoving them in the toilet to see if they can clog them. So, I know Nick's, I did get a call about Brasher Park on Saturday. Somebody complained that the bathroom was closed. My tech actually put in, he, on his report, actually questioned why it was closed since we don't open them or normally close them, it's PD. But he did go in Sunday, and somebody had shoved an entire roll of toilet paper and half of a container of paper towels into the bathroom. Pastor Lord, come on up to the podium, please.
Leonard Lord, I Pastor 8114 Leo Kid Avenue. No, just addressing that, Mayor, what we found at the church, you've probably heard of odor ban. It's one of the best things when we started to find something to disinfect with. And so, we spray down everything with it, and it can just be sprayed and dried, like when we have, and we've not had a problem. So, it might be something you want to look into. When I talked to them about it and this thing happened, they said it was the best, and that's not toxic, but yet it's to kill the germs. So, it's worked good for us ever since this pandemic started. We've been doing our fellowship all, churches all got five bathrooms, and that's what we've used, could just spray it down and walk away pretty much, you know, after it's cleaned, you know, just kind of keep it up, okay? If that'll help.
Thank you, Pastor Lord.
You're welcome, okay. Odor ban, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Mr. Sossman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Pastor Lord. Goodness, we will check it out. Sean's a good man, he'll do it, and we'll see if we can get the tables opened up as quickly as possible.
It should work good.
Thank you. Next item is, I'll remind everybody that this coming Thursday, the 24th day of September, I know you're going to say, yeah, we know all about that budget, public hearing, which is our second and the last one that night. But earlier in the day, on, if you'll recall back three or four weeks ago, when we discussed the dredge project, if you will, Duber Engineering completed it. I was in contact with Assistant County Administrator, one of their chief engineers who's over that project, as well as their Restore Act Coordinator and their compliance officer. And so, that's a good number, and we discussed it. They've asked me several questions. We've answered their questions all affirmatively. So, this coming Thursday, without further ado, we're going to be publishing for bids on BidNet and DemandStar, I believe is the name of the other platform, the advertisement for bids. And so, those bids then will stay open until the 21st day of October, at which time we'll open them in this council room and record them and bring them back to you subsequently at a meeting after that. So, we're making forward progress on that. I'll be, I'll try to answer any questions you may have relative to that project right now, if you have any. If not, what I'd like to do with that proceeding, because we're going to be using some CRA money, and of course, part of it's going to be reimbursed from Pasco County, via the Restore Act, which I'm not sure how long that reimbursement will take. That's up to them, but also the Treasury Department of the US Government, which is kind of scary, but it is what it is. What I'd like to do going forward is to create something that's pursuant to the CRA statutes, and that is to create a three-year, you know, three-year CRA program, which would be similar to a CIP, but it would be separate and apart from your CIP, which should be funds from other sources like either utilities or your general fund revenues, reserves. So, I'd like to create that. And then also, at some point in time, I think you should consider also creating a CIP, which, which I'm going to set forth in more positive fashion than what we have. Now, we have a project list, and I had a gentleman contact me the other day, he's not here present tonight, but asked me about updating that. The last time it was updated was not too long ago, that was back in June. But we've made some forward progress on a number of those items. So, I had a few extra moments this week, and we've updated it, and I have copies to pass out to you tonight. Valerie Wise, my assistant, will be, if she hasn't already this afternoon, late posted on our website, it will be posted tomorrow. So, that's something else that's positive. That's the, that's the four items I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions on any other that we have tonight, if you have at this time or later.
Thank you, Mr. Sossman. Anything, Mr. McClary?
I do have one, and we briefly discussed it in the budget with the increased revenues that we are asking. It's for infrastructure improvements because we know we're going to need things down. So, can we do a line item? You and I talked about that in the budget, like the CIP, I guess, for specific things like infrastructure?
Well, you can do that just for a week, and that would be advisable. That would go along with the CIP, capital improvement program. I know some people get lost in that alphabet soup, but I would suggest that you could do it mid, during the year, actually, we'll get this budget approved and dialed in next month. But then we'd come back to you and recommend certain projects based on what you tell us your wants and goals and objectives are.
Taxpayers can see what projects are, that money is actually going towards. And if we have the infrastructure and we have the pipes and things like that, I think it'll make a big difference.
Right, sir. And besides that one project we have tonight, the one that's out at the WOD, the Waterfront Overlake District, there's a number of others that I have discussed with staff that needs to be done because we've got some aging lift stations. I think we have like 44 or so, not just inside the city, but also in our, in our utility jurisdiction, just obviously outside the city. A number of those, as well as some of those small two-inch lines, need to be updated.
Okay, so we can then start categorizing some of this revenue into projects?
Absolutely. That would be smart.
Thank you.
Let me clarify, if we're going to do CIP, is that going to be for, basically specifically for the utilities fund?
A lot of it could be utilities. Recently authorized the acquisition of a $535,000 fire truck. I've actually talked to the fire chief and also talked to our new police chief about some items that they might need to plug in for future, whether it's a year from now or three years from now. I would suggest you start out with at least a five-year CIP program.
Because if we have a CIP program, I just want to, from a budget standpoint, try and draw from budget pots where we have surpluses such as utilities or even CRA or something like that versus, you know, general fund having CIP, I think would be more difficult.
I think it gets convoluted a little bit if you try to mix CRA and these CIP.
Yeah, yeah. I would definitely want to, my mayor's correct, I'd like to separate CRA projects and have a three-year CRA program.
Okay.
And then a separate CIP program. And a lot of things in CIP will be infrastructure, will come from the utility funds.
Okay. Well, I mean, just jumping in here, I think, you know, we're definitely on the right track, but we should definitely identify and prioritize our capital improvement needs first.
Yes.
And then see what all of these projects are, and then we can start allocating them to specific funds, prioritizing them.
Correct.
Seeing which ones come out of which budget, and then, you know, if utility, for instance, has the most need of all their projects, well, that's a little easier than maybe some other funds in terms of identifying the pot of money.
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else? Okay. At this, I want to move on to comments from council here. I'm going to start with Mr. Kinsella, and we'll work our way around.
The main question that we keep bringing up every meeting is our CAD system, is that totally online now?
As soon as we get the interagency agreement approval get signed, then it's just a matter of picking a date to get it up and going.
But all the bugs been worked out, so it just requires flipping a switch.
I'd say yes, but I'm not an IT person, but yeah, basically, that's correct.
Glad to hear that. The Port Authority Board, we talked about, of course, they're very active, and they're, they turn to the council asking to be heard and some type of special meeting. I really don't want that to sit. I don't want it to sit idle. There's a good core residents there, and how do we go about, do we need to make a special meeting? But I'd really like to see us to entertain the Port Authority Board, listen to what they have to say. Also, they have a, with the Crystal River Restoration video, they have a couple of those. I'd really like to see that, but just need direction. What do we need to do to keep this moving, keep them involved?
Can I make a suggestion on that point? I think the, really, the main thing they're working on is dredging, whether or not we can, and if it's cost prohibitive, et cetera. So, it would be a dredging workshop would probably encompass most of the issues they're looking at, correct?
Honestly, I don't know until we meet with them. They, they asked last meeting that, let's get together, let them do the presentation. I think part of it, of course, majority of it probably is a dredging piece, but still I'd like to hear what they have to say, what research they've done, what input that they have, so we can keep this moving along.
Well, the question is, can we do a more general workshop about what's going on with Port Authority? Is that what you're?
Can I?
Go ahead.
I didn't want to jump in. I'm all for, you know, he actually kind of stole my thunder a little bit. I think we should have a general workshop with all parties and let's start discussing, be it dredging, grant funding sources, whatever they've talked about. I know there was some concern about bringing the new city manager on board prior to this workshop. To me, if it's a workshop, then it's videotaped. He can, he or she can watch the videotape.
Get up to speed.
And be fully up to speed on it. So, you know, I kind of echo those same comments that, you know, I'd rather see a workshop sooner rather than later. They're charged up. I don't want to lose their momentum and kind of put them on the back burner. I know a lot of citizens are of the same nature, so, you know, let's ride the momentum, have some discussion points, and at least give them some direction of our ideas and where to go with it.
We actually brought that up last time they were here, and one of the things we discussed is we find out what the tolerance is from the citizens for possibly participating in the dredging. And I know that went around, and I thought that would be the perfect time we could discuss that. I mean, some people say absolutely, I'm not paying a penny for it. Other people are more than willing to put in quite a bit of money to get their canals done. So, that could all be done at a workshop.
So, by consensus, can we set up a workshop?
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, Nate.
You said it.
Jim says yes.
Okay. Well, let's go, let's go by, let's go.
Set a workshop, my suggestion is, if you're going to set one, you can set a workshop by consensus. Set the parameters of the workshop. We're delegated to someone. A workshop generally, you set forth who's going to speak, so you say the Port Authority Board and the councilman to speak. Who's going to be the speakers? Do you understand me? Are you going to invite the general public to participate? What would be the extent of that participation and those kind of things? You know, workshop.
Well, what I was thinking on that line is, I think that, who is it? Carl Roth?
Yeah, Carl.
Set out a nice kind of agenda for us in presentation, so I would think he would Set out a nice kind of agenda for us in presentation, so I would think he would wanna do the same, and then we would utilize his points of discussion and the board's points of discussion and work off it. So that would be my intent if we do this.
So it would be a workshop established by council, agenda set forth by the Port Authority Board, open to the public?
Sure.
And?
Set it anytime and we're done.
And if we can set a date and time that coincides with the meeting already, it might be a better way to do it.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, any of us can set up a workshop, or request a workshop be set up. What I'm trying to do is get input from the Port Authority Board as to their timing as well, so to kind of align schedules, for lack of a better term, and make sure they're all onboard for coming here before we set the date, so they can tell us what dates they're available, and then we set it from there. We don't have to set it tonight, because any, any two of us can set it.
You can authorize the decision.
Yeah. There you go.
If you don't vote on things, we're not, you get the discussion.
Great. Mr. Sossman, you okay with that?
Absolutely. I've actually had several phone calls from Mr. Roth and emails, and so I'll be glad to reach back out to him and have him to consult with the PAB members, and then bring back some dates and times to this board.
All right, very well. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no.
I wanted to, I wanted to squa, you know.
I'd just like to see this keep moving along. I mean, we've got a group of citizens that, that are, put a lot of time in their heart and soul, and it seems like historically, they talk about it, and then it goes nowhere. And the fact that we have citizens that are very active and wanna be, to keep this moving, I like to see this kept moving.
Okay.
That's all I have right now.
My turn?
Yep.
We mentioned the interagency agreement. I know something like that typically has to go before council, so where is it? Because I wanna see this CAD program going, because I'm tired of hearing about it.
It's on the agenda tonight.
Oh, there we go.
Yes, sir. You're ready to mail it.
I got it on a different one, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's the last.
There we go.
Because I didn't wanna interrupt you, but I was gonna tell you that it was the last one for tonight.
Okay, that's that one. All right, there we go.
Yes.
Never mind then. The only other item I had, other than the Port Authority Board, was the mangrove issue. Not only did I get feedback from my wife on the issue, but several of the neighbors, and it was quite impactful. I have pictures, they ripped out a good thirty, forty feet of mangroves right along the coastline, and it's one of the nat, last natural coasts or natural canals that we have there. In speaking with FDEP and SWF MUD, they're very upset, and they are investigating as well. I think from a city standpoint, we should probably try, and I asked Mr. Sossman and Mr. Foss to establish some sort of parameters that have to go through the city, so this doesn't happen again, because I have a lot of upset residents that they're obviously natural resources impacted. So, you know, I am kinda calling for us to put some, together some sort of plan, so something like this doesn't happen again. It was quite disturbing, and I have photos, if anyone wants to see it afterwards, but it's, and a lot of irritated residents, so we should really look into this, to prevent this from happening again. My guess is the state agencies will address the infractions accordingly, with whoever does it and however does it, but I think it's part of our responsibility to make sure it doesn't happen again. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have anything, I was gonna pass it to.
Yeah, well, I've covered almost everything I have from everybody. The only question I had left was for the chief, and it was regards to the CAD again. So once that's, that's all taken care of, and the fire department, you'll both be able to generate call reports at that time through the CAD system, correct?
That's correct.
Our system's actually live right now. We're receiving calls from the county when the county puts them in.
So, could then you, both agencies then?
Yeah, we're just waiting.
Start giving it, yeah.
Yeah, we're just waiting, ready to go.
Thank you. That was it?
Okay. And the only other thing I wanted to address before we move on is, one of the things that I watch when I, because I do watch some of the county meetings and some of the other meetings, and a lot of times there are constituents that can't attend meetings, so they do send in emails with questions, requests, observations, and I think it's a great way to receive information from our constituents as well. By consensus, does anyone have a problem when we get to the right area in terms of council business, allowing statements from the public coming in at the right time?
I encourage it.
I do, too.
I do, too.
Okay. Okay. So when we get to the right place, we'll, we'll accept the statement, I just wanted to make sure, just as a general rule of thumb, if we're gonna be okay with this.
But this is gonna go forward regardless of what meeting. I mean, we should encourage this all the time.
Correct.
Especially given limited attendance.
Sure. Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure before we go any further that.
But can we go ahead and make some type of announcement, or to have this all funnel to one, as opposed to somebody reaching out here or there, just funnel it to?
Well, it would go to our, it would go to our clerk, and then our clerk would pass it along. So that's, that's how it's gonna proceed, and, and the way that I'd like to do it is, just put it in the council minutes, and then have the clerk publish it when we get there, if we can do that, so, is that okay?
Well, that's, that's fine. Sal gets stuff now, as a matter of fact, we have one item tonight that we had a summary request, and I can either read it or Sal can read it, it's your pleasure, sir.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I wanted to move on to the consent agenda. I was looking for a motion.
Motion for consent, approve consent agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First item up for council business is the return of, from two weeks ago, is the approval of purchase of two F-250 vehicles for the utility department. I was gonna turn that over to Mr. Sossman for introduction.
Yes, Mayor, thank you much. As you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we discussed the acquisition for the utility department of two Ford F-15, uh, two-fifties, something like that, one-fifties, a little bigger. And you'll see under the item description in your agenda package, as well as an attachment there, too. Item seventy-two of the Department of Management of Source and State Contract, we did piggyback off of it, and we recommend that after, after your review consideration, and we'll try to answer whatever questions you may have, is the acquisition of those two, and they will be fully equipped here. So for $82,335, we can buy these two and have them delivered very soon, put them into operation at our utility department, and that's something, when we were discussing capital needs a little while ago, it's something that's desperately needed. So my recommendation, and I'm sure Sean would echo that wholeheartedly, is to move and vote to approve the acquisition thereof.
Thank you. And I was gonna ask our city attorney, any issues with the piggybacking, the way that it was set up in this particular occasion?
Um, no. I don't have any problem with, when the sheriff's association, what is it, Florida State, Florida State, those are two major ones, I didn't check the figures, but the $82,500, two of those, that list, they have the actual underlying contracts on file with them, one of the two major ones, and then I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, if you have, but then you went to three local dealerships, you got that right, after that number, that would be others.
Yes, sir. What you were originally, what you were originally handed were Sourcewell, a Sourcewell one, a Florida, Florida Sheriff's, the Florida State contract, and also the, the Sourcewell and the Florida State, or the Florida Sheriff are also on the Florida State contract.
Okay. That's all the.
The legal statement, I'm fine.
That's the only question that I had. This is a budgeted item, so I don't, I don't have any further issues.
Motion to approve purchase of two F-250 vehicles?
Second.
Before we put it to a vote, I wanna open this for the public discussion.
Actually, I have a question. It says here on the thing, all rows must be completed for standard and piggyback purchases over $2,500. We have one row completed. I know we had three numbers, but none of the numbers are listed here. I'm just making sure, are we okay with this, or, I'm just a little confused from, from the, the instructions itself. Only row number one must be completed for standard purchases under $2,500. All rows must be completed for standard and piggyback, meaning that we should have three numbers included across the line, and we only have one. So I'm ju, are we correct on this?
Yes, sir, actually we are, because we're using a state contract. You also did it in February. Ms. Martinez gave you one number, and it was a Florida.
But there was three bids included, I know she didn't fill out the.
Yes, sir. Originally, there was three bids, unfortunately, the three bids were, they're about ninety pages apiece. This is a completed, this is a completed truck, and it, and it does have the parameters that you set with the police department, which was the budgets, or the maintenance contracts. So this, this is actually the lowest, it doesn't come in as the lowest number, but it, to take away the contracts for maintenance and oil changes, for the F-250s are five years, sixty thousand miles, we don't touch anything. Ford and Port Ritchie does service, and they still came in less than Allen, Jay, and Duvalford.
So what tells me that?
I did put this package together, sir, I handed everything to, what I was, you know, I was turned in, and this is how it was delivered to you folks.
We do have all of that, but it was considered to be overkill since the last time we came in, and when we did have those, those before you, and Sean did explain to you at that time, that, that Ford, Ford Ritchie does beat the other ones that we got from. There was one, there was one dealer, for some reason, that said he wanted to put a proposal in, but we did have three.
I, I think, you know, and, correct me if I'm, usually when I present stuff or anything, at least there's a summary sheet, if nothing else, so everyone can see that this is the lowest number, this is how we came upon it, and something, because right now I have one la, page that says, they're $82,000, and trust me, it's the lowest. And I can't necessarily, you know, abide by that so much. Not that I'm, you know, saying anything, but at least give me a summary sheet or something that says, yes, we've done the homework, yes, we've gotten to where we, we need to be, and yes, this is the lowest number. Not one pa, and, you know, technically, this isn't even filled out correctly by its own sheet, because all three should be, lines should be filled out because of the piggybacking. So I'm kind of against it, just for formality sake, but that's all I'll say.
If you don't wanna prove it tonight, you can, you know, continue it for two more weeks, which is what you did the last time, and then we'll just bring this same form back and bring those, those other bids back to you, so you will have the proof in front of you.
Well, we have a motion and a second at this point, so we, procedurally, that's where we sit. I am gonna open it up to the public, Mr. Mueller, I know you signed up for this, but welcome, come on up.
Thank you. Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. Thank you, Todd, because I'm on the same page. When we're spending money, and we, as a council, we as residents, should have discipline in the decisions that we make, and in those decisions, you compare all the pricing, and you state your case, which I still don't know why they're buying them, and they probably have a legitimate need, but nothing is indicated. So in the first place, there's no why we need these trucks. The second thing, place is, part of the entire business case should address what happens to the old trucks they're using. There's evidently a need, there's evidently trucks that are probably gonna be replaced, that's not addressed, so that's missing. So what happens with that? Don't know. And when are these needed? Are they needed today? Is there immediate need? Is it future need? It sounds like it's twenty, twenty-one budget? Don't know. So what I think should be addressed is somebody should take business case 101, line item, the stuff that we're buying and why, compare that with the pricing by all the pricing, and then pick a reason why we need to buy from A, B, or C, and present that to council. Until we do that, we're kinda wasting time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Mr. Mueller's the only one that signed up, is anyone else, would anyone else like to speak? Ms. McClary, come on up. Welcome back to the podium.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Mueller.
Before I put it to a vote, I didn't make any comments on this, but my only issue isn't just what we have to look at up here, but what's in these packets, I think, is also published to the public, so they can see and know what we're doing. And I think for that reason, we should have all three bids as a cover sheet, so everybody can see why we approved what we approved, so it's a little more transparent to the public. So that's my input, and it'll explain why I vote the way that I vote, not that I don't think we need trucks. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So motion doesn't pass, and I was gonna ask to set it on the next agenda with the supporting documents, please.
We'll do that.
Thank you. All right, the next item that we have up for council business is a Waterfront Overlay District Engineering Proposal, and I was gonna pass that to Mr. Sossman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is a project that I guess has been talked about for a number of years, and on your continuing services contract, if you will, there's a company by the name of Ayers Engineering. I've met with them, talked with them several times, and they're actually, going back to a comment that was made earlier about the boat ramps and the condition there in that, or Nick Boat Ramp, I should say, at Nick's Park, they have been working on that. They felt like that, since we'd probably get a better bid if we expanded on that project, and since it's the Waterfront Overlay District, the proposal in front of you is, is one for their services, to decide, to sign the scope of work. I've had comments from individuals, as well as most recently, some from a citizen, so they would define the scope, they would do the field reconnaissance to see what is actually out there in the field existing, and they would also do a feasibility report to you. I think the grand price is just under $25,000, which is why I'm bringing it to you tonight, even though it's on our continuing services contract. If you approve this, I think they had a somewhat of a conceptual for what I guess is referred to as like a pathway there, and one of the citizens that has contacted me, if I can read it into the record at this time.
Yes, please do. First, I wanna accept it into the record, and then ask that you publish it if we may.
Okay. Oh, Sal's gonna read it.
Members of council, as the waterfront area continues to evolve, the multi-use path on tonight's agenda is the beginning of great things to come. The project does fall short, as it does not connect to the sidewalk that ends at Old Post Road. I do understand the area from where the project is expected to end, and where the sidewalk ends at Old Post is private property. However, the more the city engages with business owners, the more opportunity we have for our city to continue to evolve. This project should involve our business leaders with the WOD to maximize our opportunities as well as cost. Would the members of council consider a workshop first with the business owners of the WOD, before you move forward spending funds on a proposed plan that does not appear to deliver the best value for Port Ritchie? This was from Michael Grimes, 5440, Quest Drive.
Thank you. Back to Mr. Sossman.
As I stated, this is a proposal that's just under $25,000, and it would be to do the field recon work, decide the scope of services, and come back with a conceptual. I can forward, if you accept this, this request from Mr. Grimes, I can actually forward that on to the engineering firm for them to consider and look at. I know there was a response to one of his earlier emails that some of the property he was referring, adding into the project, was private property. That doesn't necessarily mean it'd have to stop the project at all, because you could have public participation, whether it's via their, via property that's on the private side, or whether it's from a, from a, a helpful funding source, if you will. So we can look at that, if you make the project bigger, that's, that's your option. I would welcome citizen comments in terms of their ideas to be put into a conceptual to be brought back to you, as well as comments, obviously, from yourself, Mayor, and the city council.
Thank you. And I wanna open it for discussion with council, and I kinda wanted to open on this. One of, one of the things that we're tasked with as a council and as a city is public safety. And as our Waterfront Overlay District grows, there's just simply not enough room to accommodate the traffic, the people, the cars, and there's really no means, or not very small means, low means for, for pedestrian traffic. We just don't really have the means for that right now, and I think that's a public safety issue that really needs to be addressed. I also think that it should be addressed sooner than later, in a common walkway that goes. goes through the waterfront district would certainly address that issue. As we have certain places now where there are no sidewalks and people walk out in the road with the traffic coming and going and it's just a big problem. So also, just as a practical matter, it'll just make the area much nicer and I think we need to enhance that area. And I think that we've already made some strides as we've dedicated $200,000 for some lighting and such, but I think as those projects move on, we should address some of the other issues. And if I'm not mistaken, I think we do have some money in the CRA that would be probably a pot of money that we could use to do something nice down there to enhance public safety and lighting and those are all things that cure blight too, which is really the direction of the CRA and I think that's kind of where the direction I wanted to go.
All of those could be definitely included. Improvements to the current walkways, as you indicated, street lighting, maybe even adding some of the walkways where possible depending on the property availability. Street signage, some folks call it wayfair finding signage. Mr. McClary is probably definitely familiar with that and different lines of work. Also some type of entryway that would give a better definition to that someone is approaching or entering the waterfront overlay district because some folks can drive past on 19 at 50 miles an hour and never know what they're missing. So I think some of that type of would help a lot. And obviously from a public safety perspective, we could also look at the possibility of some property acquisition for additional parking. One thing I have mentioned to, more than once to the engineer is to look at ways to expand the boat ramp itself at Nick's Park and also redesign it because of safety issues.
Thank you. So with that, I like the idea of this. I think that Mr. Grimes' note is well taken. I don't think it precludes us from expanding the project around or down Old Post because obviously we want to keep pedestrian traffic as well as we can down there. But I think this is a nice start and really the idea to have an engineer tell us whether or not we can or can't do it based on some of the challenges we have, I think, is the best way to start this project. So I was for that and I wanted to open it for discussion and/or any motions.
I have a comment. The project limit shows that this is ending right there on Treadway right by the Pirate Bar. Here's my concern. On Old Post, we have a sidewalk, a pathway, goes north, south, parallels with Old Post and it ends on the southern tip at Grand Boulevard. And then you come to no man's land from Old Post onto Treadway where, again, our concern is public safety. People walk in the street. I like to expand this and to include that area. I see citizens walking on that pathway all the time. I myself and I know numerous of my neighbors are walking, going to that waterfront district and if they get to that area, they're walking in the street. Limited lighting after hours, it is a public safety, so. But the scope here ends right there on Treadway by the Pirate Bar, doesn't go beyond that. I like to have this expanded to include that no man's land. I do understand that there's issues, but hopefully this proposal or this engineering service will be able to find out what our hurdles are so we could keep this moving forward.
And I agree because the natural flow of traffic is from Grand, that light, and down Old Post and in, so that intersection and that little piece of Old Post should certainly be part of the feasibility study, I would think. So I agree with that statement.
So I don't know what we need to do, but I would like to see this expand to include that.
If I'm not mistaken, I'm not, I could be correct if I'm wrong here, but I think if you made a motion, if everybody else agreed to it, voted in that direction, we could, you could approve it with those modifications.
Before, oh, I'm sorry. I've done this once or twice before. If we authorize this engineer to proceed today, tomorrow, whatever, he's going to go under the pretenses as I can only work within the right of way that's allowed of the roadway. And that's somewhat eliminating especially over by gildogs. A lot of that property is privately owned. We're getting the cart a little bit above, before the horse here. I kind of would like to see the city reach out to the various private businesses along this path. Two reasons. One, if someone gets hit by a car in front of gildogs or hooters or whatever the case may be, I think you know as well as anybody, the business is going to get sued, the city's going to get sued, everyone in, within 50 feet of it is going to get sued no matter what. The businesses have some probably desire to limit the safety hazard that's along these roads. Now, the businesses may or may not be able to contribute monies to the project, but they also can contribute land to the project without much of an issue, which kind of expands the scope and could present a better design alternative if we could get more land to accommodate these sidewalks in certain areas or whatever the case may be. My suggestion is let's talk with these businesses, kind of gauge their involvement and their desire to improve this walkway area and then put the engineer on the right path of what's available to him.
Can I touch on that for a moment?
Sure.
I think the place that it's most important is as you come down Treadway between Pirate Bar and gildogs is the narrowest spot. There's drainage there, there's a parking lot in front of the Pirate Bar and then you have, probably the only property would be the gildog side. So what I would suggest is that during a feasibility study, do it with the land owner not donating land versus if a land owner were to donate land, so you'd have two different looks. And then at that point, if it's more feasible to go with a plan that where there's some donated land, then reach out to the property owner and see if that's possible or not. But, you know, I think that, you know, that we could still go forward with the feasibility study with that understanding that that's a potential. And I would think that the greatest potential would be that strip of land because everywhere else right now, it's undeveloped for the most part where you, I think, probably could fit a strip. When you're talking about going down by catches and all that, there's open pieces of land. So where we have easements even. So, you know, I think that just from my limited knowledge of that area, I think that's going to be the sticking point in terms of having space and enough area to, room to do that. So I would suggest going forward with the schematic that may include both and then if we get there, then reach out to the business owner and go from there.
I would actually reach out to all of them and see what they're, gauge what there is. Maybe we can make something really special out of that whole area in terms of walkway instead of just a simple sidewalk and, you know, obviously we're looking at the bare minimum, but we want this to be a presentation area too for.
Well, I think that the way that I saw it, it was a kind of a 10-foot path in that it would be put with pavers and stuff, so it'd be fairly expansive.
Maybe, I don't see that here.
I think that was the general idea from what I understood.
Actually, and this proposal, on the, actually page 22 there where it's always the cover sheet, it says the preliminary investigations will be comprised of right-of-way investigation, clear zone reviews, with some of which you're talking about tonight. Obviously, working with the agencies and he'd have to decide the sidewalks, not just for pedestrian traffic, but also that pedestrian traffic that would be for people with ADA situations.
Yeah, that's a six-foot walkway.
Right. So you're talking about that, the stormwater.
Exactly five foot.
And the field reconnaissance that he goes into, as you all mentioned to me, something that's a possibility as part of his duties could be, of course, obviously he'd be charging us for, would be actually to find out how much land, if any, property owners would be willing to contribute to the project.
Yeah, I mean, the bare minimum from this proposal, he's going to give you a five-foot, I think it's five-foot or six-foot walkway with minimal lighting and handicap ramps. That's what we're asking for. That's basically the right-of-way investigation. He's going to establish the limits of the right-of-way and then design a sidewalk within that right-of-way. And that's what, you know, this is looking at and there's nothing wrong with that, but if we want to build up beyond that, then we're going to have to start telling him where to gear himself towards or do the legwork ourselves and talk to the business owners and seeing what's available and then he'll establish, you know, right-of-way plus X.
And it doesn't have to be the same side. You could have an eight or 10-foot walkway all the way around and where we're limited on land, then it goes down to five or six foot just in that area. That may have to happen, but.
We won't know unless we ask.
No, I understand that. So I agree that we should go for a more expansive project because it's going to be a long-term investment. That having been said, I like the idea of where this is going and I don't have a problem if you want to vote to say, let's expand the parameters to see what kind of donations or contributions can come from the business.
Well, my only concern is if we establish him right now at $24,000 and I have no problem with the monies per se, he's going to go off within the right-of-way and then, you know, two weeks down the road or whatever, we go and say, oh, well, wait a minute, now gildog says he wants it and now he's backtracking. It's just going to cost us more money at the end of the day. Been there, done that. Got the T-shirt. You know, I just don't want to put the cart before the horse is all I'm concerned about.
And in all fairness, I think there's always been talks between business owners and the city here.
Yeah.
They've been ongoing for years.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the only way to really get the ball rolling is to get an engineer down there to say what can be done.
And maybe we engage him to talk to the business owners as well and, I mean, that may be another stage of this, but let's do it all in one shot.
My input would be to widen the scope of the project to include, just like the mayor said, if we have this property here. I know at one time, Mr. Sorgian did discuss donating some property or letting us use part of it for sidewalks and I don't know whatever happened to that, but I know at one time he was amenable to do that. So I think that's very, a good way to do it. But I think if we include it in the scope, I'm always feared the things that we seem to run into here at the city that happens a lot is if we don't continue and push stuff, they tend to trail off.
Let's put it in his scope then and have him.
That's what I'm saying. Include it in the scope.
Yeah.
So if we include it in the scope, there are a couple of other things that, I mean, on my notes, I had a private and public project, which we talked about earlier, but another important thing we need to include in that scope is if you follow Treadway down to Seaside End, and I've discussed this with Len before, we own that property. There's a lot of potential parking and I'd like that to be added into that scope because parking is our biggest issue down there and we, that property's been sitting there dormant. So if we can get that included in the scope as well as also the sidewalks and potential use of private property, I think we could get this all wrapped up and move forward.
I agree because when the, you know, I went to the meetings with the, where they were talking about the under, the bridge cart path and the engineers of the feasibility study, but they did, they had three different studies and one was if you have the property, if you don't have the property, et cetera. And that was all factored in. And then there was a price differential because you had to purchase certain properties. So I think we should expand the scope of what we're talking about and then you may get two different plans, Plan A and Plan B depending on what you have for property. And I'm, I think that's the way to go.
I do too, but I want to continue moving forward, like I said. So if we can include that in the scope of the entire job, look at it that way, also make sure we include that area that's down there for potential parking. I like to keep it moving forward so it doesn't peter out and we can get some stuff done.
And if we include that area for potential parking, also, again, the scope needs to go down Treadway to that parking.
Exactly. No, I agree.
Yeah. That's included in, we changed the scope of the work that has to be in there.
I like that idea.
So with that, do we have to go back to the engineer to get a quote to expand the project?
I was fixing to ask our city attorney what might be the cleanest way is to go back with him and I could do that, go back with him tomorrow and ask him to submit an expanded proposal, if you will. Maybe with an alternative, alternate A and a B, one being something similar to what you've got with just expanding it to have city property involved and the other to, you know, the what ifs, if we could get some of the other property involved and what that would cost. It shouldn't be that much differential because he's going to be doing the field research anyway.
Right.
The only thing that would, if we ask him to go door to door, so to speak, go to all the different bars, restaurants and so forth there, that might be something that would be more time consuming because obviously he would be time dependent on those individual establishment owners.
And I like the way the county did it where they had the feasibility study with and without and then once it was with, then they started reaching out to the property owners to see if they could work something out.
And then what I want him to do ultimately, when he comes back and presents if it's going to be alternate A and B, is to have something on the order of a 3D-type presentation that he can show you because I think, you know, we all agree to say a picture's worth a thousand words. Well, you know, I think something like this would be worth several thousand words.
I think we, I think we get a, increase the scope and have it go back to the engineers and have a number brought back.
Yep. By consensus, are we okay with that?
Do we run in any kind of bid threshold requirements or?
They're approved engineers.
Okay.
We're on your continuing, you'll see an A agreement, so this will be the form of a task order that will be tacked on to that.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yep. My, we need to bring this back to you and let you consider it against the CRA board.
I thought it would have to come out of, yeah, I always thought it was coming out of there anyway, to be honest.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a higher number for sort, I don't know how much higher, but in that way we could definitely be.
Can we move it to a CRA meeting and tack that on to our next meeting?
Right. Actually, don't we have a CR meeting?
We have one Thursday.
After the workshop.
Yeah, we have one Thursday, if he can get Turner number.
After the workshop, we have a CRA.
I don't know if you can work up a price in one day, but.
I like it because what I'll try to do is put the pressure on the engineer tomorrow morning and have him to do a quick turnaround proposal and get it to me tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday, or Thursday morning and then we can add it to the agenda for you.
Okay. And if they can't, if they need more time, then we'll do it for the next meeting.
They wouldn't need more time.
Okay. All right. We'll tell him we're a little bit behind that one.
We'll hope he's not on vacation. All right, that closes discussion on item, on that item. I wanted to go to the next item, which is the police department surplus of equipment.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay. So.
Was this for the last one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Come on up. I was going to reserve comments for the next time when we bring it back, but come on up. Let's.
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. With regard to this project, I think it's incumbent upon us to seek input from the business owners down there and it sounds like we're on that page, but I think we need to get that input first so that we can go and ask what it is we want to ultimately develop. So we need business input. Potential grant opportunities there. I think there ought to be somebody looking into that. Also signage, you know, like I believe Mr. Sossman said, potentially maybe a Port Ritchie mural of our new name once that gets defined. That would be all the good things to help encourage what we're trying to do there and I think it's all good stuff. But I think there's possibly maybe an opportunity for a workshop just to socialize that and do a better communication with the community and the business owners to get the input and potentially look at expanding if those business owners want to contribute property to get a better feel and risk and all those kinds of things going on. I think it's all good. Also, this is, there's one quote. How is it we have one quote? Isn't there other companies that do this and don't we have alternatives there? I'd like to see competitive quotes on some of this stuff. I understand you're trying to get a feasibility study, but I think there's plenty of capable engineering firms that probably can produce that. Potentially a public and private partnership, I think that's all good. That's what needs to happen. Along with that, I think there needs to be a concerted, concerned effort to really inventory our own assets in this city and get everything down on a piece of paper. What's obsolete, what's end of, nearing end of life, how many drains, how many lines, useful life on that. So this is all part of kind of where we're going with this, trying to bring this city up to current standard. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Ms. Rogers, come on up.
Pat Rogers, 4838 Sunset Boulevard. Well, for 20 years, we've been talking about this waterfront overlay district and what we want to do without getting any real input from businesses. So, I think that's a good idea. But I would like to see us have a workshop where representatives from those businesses and the citizens could all talk. I was at the meeting for the walkway under the bridge, and that was a county, city, and city combination meeting. It was very interesting. A lot of data was put out. I'd like to see us have a good, healthy workshop where we know. Because right now, most of the citizens don't know what the waterfront overlay district is, what your plans are. They just hear W, you know, the waterfront, W O D, and what's that? You know, more alphabet. So, I think a workshop would be in our best interest, plus the scope of what we'd like to do and what the businesses might see from their side.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. You had a.
Yeah. I mean, I understand what's being said with workshops with the businesses. What this proposal is for is basically a feasibility study. We're going to get a report from the engineer that says we can put in a six-foot, 10-foot, whatever project. What you saw from the, for the golf cart path underneath presented was actually schematic design level, which is not incorporated. This is actually the next step. After we get the feasibility report, then we approve and they cost us more money. And then, they go into schematic design, design development, and then full construction documentation. Where we were with that workshop, you were actually in schematic design and going through. There's a lot more steps between here and there. The question, the reason I'm bringing that up is this feasibility report doesn't necessarily detail a 3D rendering or anything of that nature. We may want to, if we do want to include that, again, we're getting, one, we're getting in the schematic design, but two, I don't see it in this report. So, if we're getting a nice, pretty picture, make sure the nice, pretty picture's in the proposal.
I got it. And that's so, but that's why it may take him a little bit longer than the next 24 or 48 hours to get something to us, but.
And that's usually schematic design, which is the next step, not beyond feasibility study. Right now, we're just being told, yes, you know, we'll get a six-foot, and if we get this, we'll get an eight-foot or 10-foot or whatever we're going to get. That's about all we're going to get. But it's going to be an engineer, and then he'll say, "And it's going to cost us X hundred thousand dollars or whatever." So, that's going to be the output, so everyone's aware of it.
And we may come to a point where it's going to cost us to go this path versus this for this path. And then, that's where it really opens up for discussion to figure out what people are willing to pay as a city, you know. So, that's kind of where we're at, from what I can understand, too.
Mm-hmm.
So, close, okay. So, we'll close that out for discussion. Now, I wanted to move on to the police department surplus of equipment. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Sossman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I forgot for backup, obviously, Chief Cyrus Robinson had a cross from me. But he's got a myriad of items that's sort of kind of like a, I won't say Catch 22, but maybe like a Heinz 57 mixture. He's got some old drug info kits. He's got some old walkie-talkies, miscellaneous bracelets and brackets and wiring harnesses, some old radios, old radio batteries, some things that are no longer compatible with service, particularly since we're moving over to a newer and better CAD system. So, he's recommending that in order to make room in his limited domain, not too far from here, that you consider authorizing him to sell this as a surplus.
Thank you. I'm going to open up for any discussion and/or motion. I guess the common sense question that I have, just to make sure, is to the chief. Do you see any value at all to the city for any of this equipment?
Well, this list of items, along with the list we'll be giving during the next couple of city council meetings, are going through things that should have been either surplus or thrown out some time ago. So, we're going through some of these items, some we're going to surplus, and eventually, because of their cost and the type of item, and then we're going to dispose of. Others, we're going to try to recoup some costs through some auction sites, law enforcement specifically, auction sites. And then, if not, then we have some other auction sites that we'd like to try to recoup some of the funds from. It's not, some of the items you'll see on this list and some items you'll see on the forthcoming list, the chances of getting a substantial amount of money is not going to be really feasible. But we want to make that, make that, we'll try it.
Well, I guess the point is this stuff has zero value to us at this point. Is that kind of where we're going?
That's correct.
Okay. So, it's just eating up space and do something with it. Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
I do have one question. Is that any of those walkie-talkies, could they be repurposed for our utility workers or anything like that? I'm not sure. Or are they only lease vans and they wouldn't be?
Well, they could, but I believe that they already have a system in place that they utilize. Because that was one of the things we spoke about when I spoke to Captain Koch about it. They already have something.
I have a question. Thank you.
Looking for a motion and/or further discussion.
Make a motion to approve the equipment from the police department as surplus and depose, dispose of it properly.
Second. Anyone from the public need to comment on this? Mr. Mueller, come on up.
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. And thank you, Chief, for making an observation and trying to clean things up. I appreciate looking after that. After all, I've cut my teeth on doing inventory for 30 years, so I know how difficult that is. What I'd like to know is, potentially, when we're buying things, maybe it would be important for us to try to set in motion a plan that typically, you're buying things to replace things. We do real good on buying it, but real bad on getting rid of the old stuff. And that's not here. It's everywhere. That's business. But potentially, we're aware of that. And once we become aware of it, it's incumbent upon us to try to address it. And that's kind of where I'm coming. So, maybe we can institute more best practices that would allow us to achieve better results in the future. One of the things that I know that we've been selling, things, vehicles, whatever, is there any reporting on any of that to kind of give us a heads up, pat on the back, that, hey, you know, we took all this stuff to the auction, and we achieved thousands of dollars of benefit back into the city, and we've recouped it. I think it's an opportunity that we can actually say, "Hey, we're doing something. We're moving forward. We've accomplished our mission. And here's the result." And it might be a good thing to kind of put something like that together. I know that there's been a lot of, you know, vehicles and boats and stuff like that, and fire trucks being sold. So, it's an opportunity for you. You may want to assess it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Seeing no hands. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item up for discussion is approval of Resolution 20-07 and Certificate of Incumbency for Master Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Sossman.
Thank you, Mayor. Backed by popular demand. And Chief Robinson knows that we're not looking to, to stop you in the process of acquiring these vehicles. But several meetings back, you authorized us to proceed using cash to buy the fire truck so that we, this was a $535,000, and we didn't want to spend that additional $80,000 or so for interest. But here, we're doing something for three years. It's a lease through PNC. Their interest rate's roughly 2.7 percent, which is really good. I think Mr. McCleary, Council McCleary pointed out at a previous meeting that that's really, really inexpensive, and it is. So, you have before you something that PNC requires, which we're ready to sign these documents whenever you say yes tonight, is that the Certificate of Incumbency for the Master Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement. And there's also a schedule in there. We're not changing the acquisition price at all. It's just that we're going to spread the cost of it over three years.
Thank you. Any discussion or comment?
Mr. Matthew, you wrote a lengthy letter at the back. Do you agree with this lease overall, or is there something that we should know about?
No, I'm fine with the master lease. It's somewhat.
I'm fine with the master lease. It's very generic. There's, the specifics are in the exhibit. It's eight one with the mathematics of the year. It's very, very low. I spoke with Chief at the bank. They want us to have a formal resolution in case we don't pay that. We have no getting out of it, but as far as documents, I'm fine with it. Actually, I think we have the certificate of incumbency there. We're going to have the mayor and the clerk sign that. You override Mr. Sossman's side. But the short answer, of course, you don't, we can all go to the left of page for the right of figure.
Thank you. Any motion and/or comment?
Motion to approve Resolution 2007 and Certificate of Incumbency.
Second. Before we put it to a vote, any comments from the general public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item up for council business is our city manager search discussion. And I'm going to pass that to Mr. Sossman, just to open up, because I think he's had some contact with Collin and Basinger.
I had contact as late as, I guess, 5:30, quarter to 6:00 this afternoon. He is, he said, with the recruitment he was doing, where he said some of his five or sixth semifinalists that he was going to recommend to their particular city, drop out at the last. But he did send late last night, and I've got some packages being put together that I'll have delivered to you tomorrow. Or I've got some back on my desk. I can bring those to you after this meeting's over. They're too voluminous, honest to goodness, for you all to look at tonight and try to make a comprehensive review. Each one of us about thick as a large city, former telephone books, since they don't make telephone books that large anymore. You can do it all online. But anyway, he sends, say, to some.
Question there, but she also.
There. It actually asked them in certain words, based on the question they asked, of their resumes and their past history. Some of them actually wrote, obviously, a lot more than a five to 10-page memorandum. They, honest to God, did a whistle, so to speak. There's a lot. So, that's good. But it's four candidates, unless any of them drop out as of late Saturday. He did not notice that. So, I will have those available. Like I said, I can either pass it out to you to take home tonight. The stack of all the candidates for each one of you is about yeh-haw. It's incredible. So, I know you won't be making a decision on that tonight, so I would encourage you to take a, take a look at it. If you have any questions for Mr. Benzinger, he's available. If you don't have his phone number, I can provide it, or I can provide his email. I think he's indicated to me that he's talked to, if not all of you, most of you, either on the phone. So, with that, I'll leave it with you. It's your discussion, obviously, your decision. So, that's sort of kind of my quick down-to-dirty, if you will, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. One of the interesting things that has happened is we, we have an interim city manager that's been here now for multiple months. And originally, when we sought him out, he was, I think, vetted through the same agency or similar agency. And really, his whole purpose was just to kind of hold down the fort and make sure, you know, there's no immediate problems that happen in the city until we find a more permanent fix. And in my opinion, he's exceeded my expectations because I think he's really moved along really well with the employees, as well as with some of the projects that we have, in terms of not just being what we would look at as a temporary. But I think that he's moving us forward, probably in a more permanent direction, positive direction at this point. So, I wanted, I just wanted to know if I can ask Mr. Sossman if you would be willing to entertain staying longer and on a more permanent basis in the city. Or we originally contracted with you for about six months, and you came out of retirement to help us. So, we certainly are very appreciative. But I kind of was curious as to what your position was in terms of whether or not you would entertain more than what you've already agreed to in terms of employment.
If you'll notice, Mr. Mueller likes to sit close to me. Also, we chat between meetings as early or recent as today. But he will sort of gives me, down in the country, if you will, chestnuts of me in a mild manner about going back into retirement. And I told him, I said, "My wife won't let me retire." She, and I found out we have sort of kind of a mutual bond because he at one time worked for GTE, which became Line-X, if I remember right, and then went on to become Horizon. But my wife started out years ago with Southern Bell, which became Bell South, which became AT&amp;T, where she retired. But she and I don't have children or grandchildren or anything like that. So, she tells me I can't retire until she tells me I can retire. And when I told him that, he said, this is a long answer to your short question. I'm sorry. Oh, this is a story. But he says, "We need a wife like mine." And I said, "Why?" He says, "Well, she just told me we need a bigger boat." And I said, "Okay. Maybe my wife will let me buy a boat one day, you know. I've got a new car, which I feel pretty good about, since I've only had it three months." But anyway, I'm not really ready to retire, not having those responsibilities. She and I've been footloose and fancy-free. We got married way back when, when I was in undergrad school, and have stayed married ever since. I won't tell you how long, because we're up in the national average of married life, if you will. But, you know, I'd be willing to consider, you know, discussing with you or with Jim or the city council, you know, an extension of my contract, whether it's extending as an interim or whether it's extending as a, I hate to use the word permanent for city and county management, because I've done both. And I've been in some places 12 years, 19 years, and two different, three different jobs with that, without the establishment. But, you know, I would definitely be willing to consider staying on beyond. And that would be up to you in terms of how long you want me to stay. But if we could work out something, it would be my pleasure. I've been happy here. I have fun. I think we've made some forward brokers, to use football terms. And if I stayed, well, to go back to what you said about the being a housekeeper, so to speak, which is nothing wrong with that, holding the fort together. I tend to see, as my wife will tell, Mr. McCleary's wife is here, so she may say the same thing about him. I don't know. She says, "You create work." And I haven't had any department head scream yet. So, I like to work with them and find things to do and ways to improve, not keep doing things the way we've always done. But if there's a new way to do it and do it better, maybe more efficiently, more better cost-saving, I'd like to do that. So, the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I wanted to open it up. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. It's the first time that we've broached really the city manager search discussion since we originally hired a search firm. And I wanted to start with Mr. Cancelo to my right and just kind of have him weigh in.
I really appreciate what you've done helping us. And, Mr. Sossman, when you came on board, and what I've been impressed with is that you came on board, you took ownership, and you're handling business as if you were here to stay, as opposed to being in the interim and just kind of putting things aside, waiting. But you've kept us moving along, and I really appreciate that. Very, very impressed with that.
Thank you. Mr. McCleary, do you have any thoughts?
I think you've done a great job as an interim. You've really taken possession of it. You haven't just made sure the chairs weren't stolen out of the building when we worked. And I would have no problem with you entering your resume in for consideration with the other candidates. I think it would be unfair to them, including Collin. Well, he gets paid either way, but he's put a lot of time and effort into this as well. I think, you know, allowing you to go to submit your resume to go from the interim to the permanent position is very acceptable. There's nothing wrong with it.
to the permanent position is very acceptable, there's nothing wrong with it, but you should go through the, the same procedures as everyone else, so we can be presented with a full presentation of all candidates for the position. That's kind of my take on it, because quite honestly, I received a brief summary from Colin today on all candidates. Not saying that anyone's more qualified or less qualified at this stage, but I think in fairness to everybody, that it should be a unified review.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren.
I think we're all on the same page. I was gonna actually ask if he would submit his resume with, with the group as well, so I think we're all on the same page, and I'd be happy to, to have you here as well. So definitely, I'd like to get a look at everybody, but we would really appreciate if you would put your name in the hat, so to speak. Thank you.
And with that, I, I wanted to know if anyone else had any other comments? There was, I think, some people signed up for this, so I'll only open it to the public just for a moment, I think. Mrs. Pat Rogers? Oh, there's another, okay. Any show of hands, if anyone else that would like to weigh in? Pastor Lord, come on up.
Leonard Lord, Pastor, A1140 York Avenue. Now, there just seems to be a, a type of kinship. I know when I met Mr. Sauserman, and then I just asked him the question, I says, were you having fun here yet? He says, yeah, I kinda like it. And usually, when somebody likes something, they do good at it. And so, you know, just the very fact that now, you know, he's kinda set in the saddle, and everybody sees how he rides, at least you've got something there, you know? So as you go forward, then you can look, and if you do have any hesitations, you know you got security there. And so I just, I think it's, I think it's great, and I know you need to be fair to all of them, but, you know, when something's fit, and you might not wanna break it and refit, but we'll see what the Lord has, but I, I think it's, I think it's good. Congratulations, looking forward to working with you more. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Lord.
I, I do have a question. When we, when all this was brought forward to the council about looking for interim city manager, was there something that we approved? And refresh my memory, I'm getting at that age, I don't recall, but we agreed that, or was it brought up that whoever we bringing on board as our interim manager was not able to apply? I mean, did we vote on something? Is there something we have to change?
We, we did, that was the original discussion. I think it was more by, I think it was a consensus amongst us at the time.
It wasn't a resolution, it was a consensus to it, so.
So, and, and one of the things that I would like to point out is, the applicant pool was a lot smaller than I thought it would be. So this gives us just, I think, more options to choose from at this point. You know, in my opinion, if I had, if they had 10 or 12 people, I might feel a little bit differently, but having a smaller pool of applicants, I think this makes more sense. And that's just the way that it turned out, and from my discussions with Colin and Basinger, that it's not just our city, but other cities are having the same issues with, with applicants for these types of positions. So if we can, by consensus, would you like, we should probably go around and make sure that's okay, that he can apply for this, since we went to consensus the other way? Are you okay with it?
I'm, I'm very happy with it.
Okay.
I'm fine with it, but just, just as some feedback, I know Colin is also, we currently have four, and I believe Colin is actually looking at two more, so that would bring the total plus up to seven overall for it. So I know Colin was in the process of investigating the other two. Obviously, he will be doing some more vetting, I'm assuming, for Mr. Sauserman, so that we're probably pushing the total of this, the total decision process of this back another two to three weeks, just kinda putting everyone on the same page here.
But the most we're gonna have at this point is seven, the least we're gonna have is gonna be four plus.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, just so everyone is aware, that we're probably going another two to four weeks out at this point.
As important a decision as it is, I, I'm.
I agree.
Okay with that, so by consensus, I'm good?
I'm good with that.
Okay. So I think by consensus, we're gonna open it. With that, I, I missed someone when I originally opened it to the public, so I wanted to, if there's anyone else that would like to speak, Mr. Mueller, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. I, I think it's a good choice to allow him to participate. The only thing that, that I would suggest, out of fairness, and there, again, I don't know how the process works, but if those resumes are being funneled through Mr. Sauserman, and he's now a candidate in that pool, does that pollute the pool? And do you need to move that to a, to an independent source, so that they're not, you know?
He actually poses a good point. The big point of contact for Colin is Mr. Sauserman.
Yeah.
It should probably shift to somebody else within the organization theoretically, non-elected official. 'Cause it's, here's the problem, you have the, the boss now interviewing with the consultant for the boss's position.
Well, I agree, I think, but all he's really done is pass, pass the stuff along.
Yeah, but.
I don't think he's made any decisions. That having been said, is there anyone within the city that can just pass the stuff along to us, as it comes from Colin and Basinger?
Yeah, the clerk could do it.
Okay. Okay, so, and then from here on out.
It'll go to Sal, and then to us.
And then the only issue is, you know, cutting checks and paying them, most. Last to go to the city management, so.
Yeah, but that goes through the finance director and everything else, so that's.
Other than that, I, I think that covers all the issues. Mr. Matthew, do you see any other issues with the direction we're headed?
No, that's fine. In other words, yes, we did, it was agreed upon at the time that you approved the agreement with Mr. Basinger, that, that we would not do that, but it was just for a goal we built on that, so do it by consensus upon the time.
Okay.
That's fine. Someone said that was sound, we can send it to all of you. Well, that's good.
Okay.
You might think you want to hire right up to the bottom, Kirk.
Okay. Thank you. That having been said, I think we're gonna close the discussion, and then I'm sure it'll come back up in a month or so anyways, once we've reviewed all these packets. So we'll, we'll proceed from there as, as we need to.
Just one more thing, I guess we can start getting some of these packages, I know he's putting it together, and obviously, if they're so voluminous, let's start looking at it now, and get them as they come along.
I think they're supposed to be delivered tomorrow, the next day, so.
Yeah, don't hold up that process, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
They're pretty big, he has them now, just came.
They're gonna be getting, Sean and Jim will get them, they're literally as, when I say phone book size, I'm not kidding.
You don't have to give them to me now, I'm fine with that, I was just saying, don't stop the process.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna drop them on you, but I do need to ask one question. You said, man, I have no problem, and I understand everything you're saying, 'cause I don't wanna be, you know, perceived of being a polluter of the pool, so to speak. But I also need to ask, should I submit, I have, I have Sal contact Mr. Basinger tomorrow to let him know what, what the story is, but I need to ask, too, do I need to submit my resume to Mr. Basinger, or to all of you, or whatever? Because I'm assuming.
I think you should go through the same vetting process that everyone else does.
To, to Mr. Basinger, I think would be the best thing to do. So when Sal talks to him, he'll, he'll know what to expect from me.
Correct. And we've already seen a glance of it when you originally, 'cause you were originally vetted at some point when you came to us, but you'd have to go through the same vetting process again as everybody else.
He's actually already done that for me.
Right.
'Cause that's why he didn't wanna recommend an ax murderer to you all, which could've been me.
Thank you, Sal. Little reading. I was hoping to see some pictures, but I don't. With that, we have one last item. Is everybody ready? I know that a couple people left, came back. We're gonna move on to the next item, which is gonna be the approval of inter-agency agreement, which is gonna be for the, for the CAD system. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Sauserman for introduction.
As, I think, as Chief, Chief Robinson mentioned earlier, based on another question about the CAD system, this, this should hopefully put us at a conclusion of this long process, 'cause you'll be considering that inter-agency agreement, as was mentioned earlier. It's between Pasco County Sheriff's Office and the Port Ritchie Police Department, and to access to a number of things, like the criminal justice information, CJI, and the maintaining of that criminal justice network consisting of computerated dispatch systems, which everybody here is interested in, I know. Records management system, RMS, as is referred to by those in the law enforcement, jail management, mobile computer terminals, and a number of other law enforcement agency rules and regulations. So we say we have to abide by that. I know the chief is all for it, I'll back him 100 percent, and this should put us in a position to complete it, so that hopefully, when next time you ask that question, we can say we're at 100 percent, full speed ahead. Oh, and one other bit, this chief and I did sign an inter-agency agreement just a day between, no kidding, between the Port Ritchie Police Department and the City of Port Ritchie. So if that's already done, pending your approval tonight, then we'll be, we'll be straight legal, so to speak.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up for any kind of motion and/or discussion.
I'm only approving it if everyone promises I never have to hear about this CAD system again, other than it's working.
I have it down in my old business, we're gonna talk about it after this for a little bit. You got a motion to approve?
Second.
Before we vote, any comments from the public? Seeing no hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we're gonna move on to old business. I'm gonna start the other way this time, and start with our vice mayor, Mr. Denver.
I think we already covered the stuff I had for old business, which was Nix Park and the CAD system, so I'm, I'm good to go.
I've covered everything I wanted to cover as well.
I have nothing. I have nothing.
Okay. With that, we're looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.